God, Leach. Where is he? Shoot, man I'm looking for. Okay, we're gonna call our meeting, December 1st, 2014, Board of Education Meeting to order. At first, we're gonna have the swearing in of the new board members. That would be Judge Leach, I believe.
Thank you.
Got to change and get that robe on.
Have robe, will travel. Okay.
All right.
First, I should say what a distinct honor and privilege it is to be asked to do this. This is one of the very best parts of my job. If I call, when I call your name, and we're gonna do this by alphabetical order, if you'll come up, if you have someone you'd like to hold the Bible with you, if you'll bring them with you, if you don't swear on the Bible, you can just raise your right hand. First, Mildred Atkinson, counsel. Okay. You got folks with you?
Yes, I have my husband Walter and my son Logan counsel. He's representing that other son that can't be here this evening.
And are you ready, prepared to take the oath?
I am.
Okay, you'll put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Mildred Atkinson, counsel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
As member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
But before you leave, I need two signatures. One there.
And I would like to say too, I'd just like to thank the constituencies of District 1, Seat A, for supporting me and my family.
Thank you very much. Next in order, Caroline Dougherty. How you doing?
My daughter Caroline.
Hi, David Leach, how you doing?
Good.
Hi, nice to meet you. Okay, if you're prepared to take the oath, if you want someone to hold Bible for you, that'd be great. Okay, left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Caroline Whitehead Dougherty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
As member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Nothing has ever won a signature in life. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next in order, Benji Forrest.
Judge Leach, it's an honor for you to swear me in, and my lovely wife Pam is gonna hold that Bible.
Okay, it's an honor to do it. Nice to see you.
And before you do that, may I say something?
Yep.
I want to thank everybody for, I've served in education for 38 years. And the last six years has really been a learning experience for me, a humbling experience for me. But one thing about it, I think we have all grown and become better educators and citizens of Pitt County in pursuit of what's best for our young people. And I hope to do that again for the next two years. And thank y'all very much. Thank you, Judge.
All right.
Put it on the left hand.
Left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Aye, and state your name.
Benji Forrest.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
As member of Pitt County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Now, don't get off. Need signatures. All right.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Who else is next? Who's next?
Next in order, Walter Gaskin.
You glad to be in, nobody missed.
Walter.
I'm doing well, I hope you are.
This Bible belonged to my grandpa. Yes, through my voice, who raised me. It is 101 years old. And this one was named after him. So I want you to do like I told you, David, you hold it. Why, hold it now. Okay?
All right.
Ready?
Left hand.
I'm ready.
Okay, left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Walter Gaskin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not in.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
As a member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Don't get off yet.
I don't get off that light.
Nah, two signatures.
And I do have another daughter that's principal in Oklahoma City, Memphis County.
Thank you. Mary Blunt Williams.
And this is my husband Joel Anthony Williams.
Okay, nice to meet you. All right, and Ms. Williams, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
I'll ask you to put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Mary Blunt Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully, faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
As a member of the Pitt County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I would like to say also, thank you to all of my family that's here this evening, and my friends, and I'd like to thank all of my constituents that voted for me. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. It's really a pleasure, I really like being asked, thank you.
Okay, we'd just like to welcome the new board members onboard and look forward to working with you as a fellow board member or chair, whatever. But at this time, we will have the pledge of allegiance, Mark.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a moment of silence, and we need to remember Michaela.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? In your moment of silence prayer, I'd like for you to remember my neighbor who passed away today.
Okay. Michaela Little from Rose High, a student, was killed in Edgecombe County. And I think there were other students that were also killed. So we need to remember their families and what they're going through at this time. And also the students and friends of that young lady at Rose, as well as the other friends of the students who were killed. Walter, we need to remember your neighbor.
My neighbor Charlie Taylor, who died me today, died of a massive heart attack at work. So remember him in your prayers.
Again, we need to remember our parents and our schools and the safety aspect of everything in regards to our schools. And hopefully that we'll have a good school year from this point forward. And, you know, I think there was a lockdown at school, in a school today, in regards to a shooting nearby. And we never know when we're gonna have to encounter something like that, so we always need to be ready, but we also need to be in prayer for everyone. Let's have a moment of silence. Dear Father, we thank you for this school system, we thank you for these new board members that are onboard, and we just pray, dear Lord, that they will be able to be productive, and we pray that this whole entire board will be productive. And, dear Father, we pray for Michaela Little and her family and her friends at Rose High. And we just thank you for all your blessings and thank you for preparing heaven for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Linker.
Well, at this time, I'll take nominations for Chair of the Pitt County Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Worth Forbes.
I'm wishing for Worth Forbes to have other nominations. We don't need to second those.
I move nomination be closed.
Second. All family closing nominations? Others against, Dave? Since we only have one nomination, do we have to vote, or is it voted by acclamation?
If there's only one nomination, that's applied after.
Right. Mr. Chairman?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll take this down and put it back up. Appreciate that, thank you for everyone's support. At this time, we will have nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, nominate Benji Forrest.
Any other?
I'd like to nominate Mary Blunt Williams as Vice Chair.
Mary Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the nominations.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of Benji, raise your right hand. And all those in favor of Mildred, I mean, Mary, raise your right hand. Okay. Benji, congratulations.
Thank you very much, I look forward to serving the board and look forward to working with you, Mr. Chairman.
Mark? We'll see you later. Y'all can switch.
Want to?
Yeah, that's what you're supposed to.
Mark? Mark, your nameplate?
I passed it, I ain't got one.
Okay, we go down to routine business, any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be accepted as written.
Mark makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Benji seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it passes. At this time, we have, we'll have public expression. Is this Marty? Marty Anderson. And you got three minutes, Marty.
All right.
And you can take a look up here on the screen.
Okay. My name is Marty Anderson, I'm here on behalf of the middle school protecting our children. If we watch the news, there's situations all over the county, kids are having some trouble. We need to do something about it, our schools used to be safe haven for our children. I mean, we as parents try to take care of our kids at home, but when they go to school, we look for our school to take care of our children. Our children are made to follow rules at home, and we think there needs to be something done in the school about all the free time the kids are walking around in the lunchroom and just a little more supervision. We have situations where our child was, came to us, and we've had things done at school, and we've come to them, and just things have been not done. And, I mean, we've had several situations go on. In the lunch, I mean bathrooms, I mean, I think we need a little more supervision to help out with the teachers, I know teachers can't do it all. They should be watching the hallways, lunchroom, they should be with their groups. I mean, they shouldn't be just sitting around talking. We had a couple of situations in our school district in the last six, what, six months, where we've lost two kids in our school district. I just, we gotta do something about it. We've had to take our child out of school and move her to a different school. Just, I think there's more things that we need to do. I think parents could try to help out on their days off, maybe help out. I know this, like, stuff the school board don't have enough money to pay for so many people to do it, I think we could have some parents maybe on their days off, they could come out and help out at the school. I know we have citizens on patrol that work with the police department, maybe they could do something for the school. I mean, I'm pretty sure there's some way we can find somebody that can help us out. I mean, just, my biggest thing is I want all kids to be safe, I don't ever want to see nothing like this ever happen, nobody should ever have to go through that period. The biggest thing is if... I don't, I don't know how to put it, the right word for that. Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Dana Anderson. Dana. Three minutes here.
Hi, my name is Dana Anderson, I'm a concerned parent from Aiding. My concerns for our school system, our staff, and most of all, our children. We have issues doing things to other children that demeanor them in a form, this is considered bullying, we need to find ways to make it stop. It doesn't matter if someone thinks that I'm fat, I'm a nerd, or whatever they think, but if this is hurting our children's feelings, someone needs to step in. There have been many situations, I, ourselves, have had problems with our daughter's school due to the children stole her ring from her, she's been chased down the hall by other students, the same student was cussing her, threatening her, also cursing the teacher that she ran into the room to hide from. She was picked on for being fat, she was harassed in the lunchroom, so she started buying items in the lunchroom to get them to leave her alone. There are certain staff members, not all, because we do have some good staff, but there are a few that like to yell and curse at our students. And when we go to the administration of the school, only thing we are told is it doesn't happen at our school. My daughter is picked on a lot, and all of our concerns were ignored. A year and a half later, a comment was made by a staff member that anytime there's allegations at our school, that there was an investigation done. So my question was, what was the outcome of all the allegations that I made? Because there are several situations. Recently, there have been situations of a child being beat up in the class, in the bathroom. All the children did was sign a paper not to harass this child anymore. There is lack of supervision in the school, in the bathrooms, in the cafeteria, and places like that where these children are hanging. There has been several situations where autistic kids are being harassed. They already have problems, and this doesn't help them. There was a situation that was seen where an autistic child left the school grounds when it was mentioned to the staff. Their concern was, oh, they'll just walk home, it'll be okay. Instead of saying something to help them. These people need to be able to say something to these children. My concern is for the staff as well as the protection of the children. As I seen, our concerns were ignored, so for my child's protection, I personally went to the parents of the children that were affecting my child. The response to me was, I overstepped my bounds. My response to them is, and as well as anyone else, I am a parent, I am to protect my child. We have offered to help the school, but we were told no. We need to worry about the safety of our children, not state statistics.
Thank you. David Harper.
Good evening, my name is David Harper. I am a concerned citizen and parent of Pitt County. Y'all gotta forgive me a second. I realize that, um, y'all got a big job ahead of you that sits on the table night after night, day after day. Things do slip through cracks, and I understand that, but as a concerned parent, we have got to all get together in the community somehow, whether it be stepping up to the public, talking to you like tonight, or a comment box. But we are, we have kids in school that is being bullied, and people are turning their heads and turning their noses up because they really don't know what to say, they don't know how to come about it. I feel that we need to have more authority, and I know, I understand that the authority is, has got to be funded, but, I mean, in North Carolina, we started the lottery for the schools and everything, and isn't that supposed to go towards helping out with the bullying and all kinds of other stuff that's going on with the schools? I got a lot to say, I know there's, and I was told to write it down, and that way, but that's not, just reading it off a piece of paper isn't, isn't personal to me, this is personal, and, um, it's, I don't want to have any, any kid, any child, any parent ever have to go through anything that's going bullying, have to stand up and have to bury their child, or wonder how come their child is pulling away from crying because they're being bullied, their bags are kicked around in school and everything like that. I just feel that we need a lot of help, and I understand that we got a long road ahead of us, but we're asking for y'all's help and y'all's to help us out. Thank you.
Thanks. Sarah Curtis. Sarah Curtis.
Let me start. My name is Sarah Curtis. I sincerely hope you have all read the letter regarding the young man who took his own life earlier this year because of bullying. That letter is what got all of this started, and I wrote it because I see a need for a law to protect our children. One thing I'm going to briefly speak on is that the name of the law needs to be for all children and not just one. While I know that we cannot give the law the names of all the children who took their lives because of bullying, the fact that we single out one child and named the law after isn't fair to the other families, it needs to be a generic name anti-bullying law. Times have changed as I was in high school. We did not have social media and cell phones like we do now. People are getting bullied through social media, and lots of times the parents or other adults don't even know about it. It concerns me that there are actual laws against cyberbullying, but no laws against face-to-face bully. That just doesn't make sense to me. As I'm sure you're aware, North Carolina general statutes state that the cyberbullying penalty is minors and persons over 18 years of age can be charged with a Class 1 or Class 2 misdemeanor for cyberbullying. Why isn't there a law for face-to-face bully like this? I can't breathe. According to a research review conducted by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, bullying by itself does not cause suicide, but researchers, researchers found that youth who are bullied are more likely to be depressed. Think about suicide and actually attempt suicide. The 2014 statistics are as follows. Eighty-three percent of girls and seventy-nine percent of boys report being bullied either in school or online. However, only twenty to thirty percent of them reported to their parents or school officials. Seventy-five, seventy-five percent of school shootings have been linked to harassment and bullying against the shooter. Not shockingly, students who are bullies as young adults continue the trend of abuse and violence into adulthood. By the age of thirty, approximately forty percent of boys who are identified as bullies in middle and high school have been arrested three or more times. I'm here to encourage you to protect our children. We as parents can only do so much. When we drop our children off at school, we expect them to be protected. They aren't being protected at all. If the bullies out there knew there were consequences to their actions, I truly believe they would stop. According to your website, your mission statement is "Pitt County Schools Through High Expectations, Excellence in Teaching, and a Safe, Orderly Environment Will Ensure That All Students Master the Skills Necessary for Success as Long as Lifelong Learners in a Rapidly Changing World." The word "safe" is mentioned in your mission statement, while our children's schools are not safe. I have heard many people say that the children should stand up to the bullies. Well, not only, not all children are as strong-minded as others. I have heard some people say they should just hit the bully and show them they are not scared. Do we want to teach our children that violence is the answer? Children are our responsibility to protect. If the schools can't protect them while the children are there, maybe there needs to be a change within the school system and get people in there who want to make sure nothing happens to any of our children. If this was your child being bullied, wouldn't you want something done?
Thanks. Sarah Curtis.
That was Sarah Curtis.
That was Sarah Curtis. Jeff Hulon.
My name is Jeffrey Hulon. I reside in Pitt County, as y'all know. Parents should never have to bury their child. Too many people are having to do so because their children are taking their own lives because of bullying. I believe that if you, the bullies know that there are consequences in their actions, they would think twice before they start bullying another child. This is why there needs to be an anti-bullying law to protect our children. Over 3.2 million students are a victim of bullying each year. Approximately 160,000 teens skip school every day because of bullying. One in four teachers see nothing wrong with bullying and will only intervene 4% of the time. One in 10 students drop out of school because of repeated bullying every day. This is a serious problem. Something needs to be done. It starts with you. Please don't let another child be bullied. I do not want another parent to have to bury their child because of bullying like I had to bury my son. Thank you.
Angela Hulon.
I'm Angela Hulon. I'm gonna tell you a little story. On March 4th, 1997, I had a beautiful baby boy was born. He was the firstborn of the parents. They were so happy he was here. He was certainly changed their lives, but he was loved every minute of it. He loved dirt bikes, helping dad build things. He helped uncles with cars, playing video games. Most of all, he loved his family. His father and mother brought him four wheeler for a surprise, and they him because... He also loved four-wheelers. He wanted to play football in college, become a pro rascal like, he liked Johnston and Randy Orton. I could go on about what a wonderful young man he was, but the only thing I need to know, you need to know that he will never ride a four-wheeler. And his father and mother would never buy him, never, for him. He would never play football in college. He would never be a pro rascal. That is because he killed himself because he was bullied in school. Why did this happen to this young man? What did you ever do to these bullies in treating him so, so bad? His parents never, never eat with him or another Thanksgiving dinner or dinner with their son. His mother would never open another birthday present, Christmas present, for their son. His family would never do anything else with this young man. There, nothing was done to the kids who responsible of the child's death. It isn't fair. Some, some things needs to be done to make sure this never happen again. Anti-bullying law needs to be in place to protect our children. The law isn't just about one child who killed themselves because of being bullied. It's about all children. We have, who have killed themselves, but the name of the law needs to be presented to all our children, just not one. I was not stopped till I know other children has been protected from the bullets. Please protect our children and by the way this young man who killed himself was my son. Thank you.
Thanks. Mary Dale.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Mary Dale, and I'm a proud grandmother of several late children. I'm concerned about the bullying. I am asking for the support of, on the school policy that will empower our schools and educators in their effort to protect students from bullying and harassment. Once considered as a rate of passage, are just kids being kids. Bullying has been defined by mental health experts as an act of abuse and terrorism on the most vulnerable. Bullying is an issue that directly and negatively affects students' ability to learn. Research is linked bullying to a host of emotional concerns. Educational concerns include academic failure, depression, substance abuse, delinquency, gang provations, self-harm, and even suicide. The good news is that there is a great deal that can be done to change this, and the time to act is now. Bullying is an issue that has been accepted in our schools far too long. Bullying is everyone's issue, and I want to see policies that support bullying, education, and prevention in our schools. Every school needs policies that indicate bullying is not acceptable and that it will be met with severe consequences. With education and awareness, parents, administrators, and teachers can create a school environment that does not tolerate bullying and that teaches students, adults, how to, teachers, excuse me, and adults how to efficiently address bullying issues. Before we demand that our children meet our high standards of economics, achievements, we must first ensure that our schools are living up to its standards to create a safe learning environment for our children. The governor has already set aside October as Bullying Awareness Month to help. Papers have already been sent to Raleigh to start the passing of a list of laws to make bullying illegal in North Carolina. I ask that your full support with this policy, and together, we can make our schools a safe and nurturing place for our children to learn. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Shannon Harper.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Shannon Harper, and I'm a concerned parent here in Pitt County. My area of concern is the bullying issue in our schools. Bullying is a new way for our children to say and do things to other students that, who are not as strong-willed. And the best times for these occurrences are when teachers and school faculties are not around. The cafeteria, when children are waiting to go to homeroom, is ideal for bullying to take place. Students are having their food taken from them or book bags kicked around. Another place bullying takes place is in the bathrooms and locker rooms, when there's very little supervision. To a child, this can be a scary experience, to be attacked in the restroom by children who have little respect for others' privacy. As a parent, it is our job to protect, nurture, and educate our children. When we send our children to school, we should expect the same things from the school administration. Instead, when a child is sent to the office for bullying, that child signs a statement saying, "I shall not bully again," and then sent back to class. Can you please tell me where the punishment is in that? It is just words to them. These bullies have little respect for others' welfares, so why should they respect a piece of paper? Actions speak louder than words, and to hold these bullies accountable is what needs to be done. Not only the bullies need to be held accountable, school administrations need to be, hold some of this responsibility. They need to take a more active part in preventing these incidents. A teacher's presence in the halls and restrooms during class changes and even early morning while children are in the cafeteria waiting for homeroom bell could make a significant difference. Not sit in their office and pretend things are not going on. I'm here tonight to tell you that these things are happening. School administration needs to wake up to the fact that bullying does exist. Not another child should have to put up with being bullied. They need someone who will stand up for them and punish those who make them feel less than person. I buried my only child as a result of bullying, and no parent should go through what we have. No parent. We have felt with issues before with school administration, and nothing was done. So please do something. Thank you.
Thanks. Pamela Penny.
Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Pamela Penny, and I live in Ayden. I'm a proud parent of a screwed age son of bullying is a real concern of mine. I'm wanting your support on a school policy that protects our students from bullying and harassment. Bullying is a real issue in our school system that can't affect our children in a negative way such as their ability to learn and their effects of bullying can be, um... I can't remember that word. ...on a child as well as their loved ones. Bullying has been accepted in our schools for too long. I would like to see a policy for harassment, harsher punishment of those individuals. I would also like to see more open communication between the school, officials, and the parents of our children or interested to the school system every day. I would like awareness, education for our administration and teachers so they can effectively, effectively address bullying issues in a timely manner. I want a safe school environment that those not tolerate bullying and emphasizing there will be consequences. And, you know, suspending them is not a punishment. It's a vacation to them. You know, I had, my child was bullied also in school, and he, didn't he want to go to school? He had, like, he had stomach aches. He said, "Mom, I just, you don't know how it feels when somebody does this. You just want to die," is what he said. You know, when your child gets to the point that he don't want to go to school and bullying, it shouldn't, I mean, something should have been done about bullying before now. And that's why we're here tonight, to make sure something is done, because we don't want nothing to happen to any more children taking their own lives because of somebody bullying them. And I just thank you for hearing what I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Hobbs.
Um, hello there. I'm Jessica Hobbs.
Pull that down so we can hear you. Close.
And I'm 13 years old, and this is my Stop Bullying speech. Bullying must stop. Sweet harmless children are dying because of this. Kids are becoming unintentional murderers. We need to take this to the next level. We need to put more eyes in the schools. All the teachers and staff members go to, go only to a certain extent before they stop the bullying. Then they don't even give a harsh enough punishment. All they do is send them to a room so they can be watched and make sure they don't talk. That's it and nothing more. They need to be chastised and taught a lesson so they will quit this nonsense. We must stop at nothing until bullying has stopped. Now, I thought that we could get volunteers from the parents to go into the classrooms and lunchroom to watch over kids, because these teachers and staff just do not help. This will mostly help in the lunchroom, because that's where most of the bullying starts. And that is where, and that is where it should end. This is why we need this law. This is why we must stand up to the bullying. There is probably a child right now or planning to tomorrow sometime to hurt themselves due to bullying. We as children need help and support. So I say, "Stand up to bullying." Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our public expression, and I'm sure that due to the number of people that we've had to speak to it, Dr. Linker's been taking notes, and I'm sure he'll probably share some things with principals regarding supervision and so forth that maybe will help alleviate some of the problems, and we as a board can continue to brainstorm in improving this in our schools. All right, we've got spotlight on teaching and learning. Brock.
Hello, everybody. Congratulations to the new board members, new seats and new appointments. Our spotlight tonight is on athletics. As I'm sure most of you are aware, we've got an esteemed tradition of athletic success in Pitt County. And as some of you mentioned during our last meeting, we had a state championship team recently. The J.H. Rose volleyball team won the 4A state championship, and it's good to get them in here tonight so we can recognize them for their accomplishments. I'd like to ask their head coach, Mr. Norm Cabacar, to come forward and talk a little bit about the team and introduce the ladies to you. I remind the players when we have our parent meeting that they are student athletes, which means they are students first. Athletics comes second. So if their grades aren't where they need to be and the parents feel that they need to miss practice because they need to get their grades up, then the parents' wishes will be honored. But for the girls, this is something they love to do. So when you have something in place that will encourage them to be a better student, for instance, playing volleyball, they will work hard in the classroom. The coaches at J.H. Rose, we all share with the other teachers our roster, so if any of our student athletes are not performing in the classroom like they should be doing, to please reach out to us, because we would like to know too. But for this season, this, these young ladies started working hard in the summer. We have open gyms that start right after school ends. It's not mandatory or required, but most of them do show up. We run five days a week, three hours a day. We finish up going to UNC's Carolina camp, which is a three-day camp with very tough competition. Then we have tryouts. For the young ladies, tryouts, I think, is the most stressful time for them all. We have only a limited number of uniforms and positions, but we have a great amount of talent that tries out. So everybody realizes that when they show up, they need to be prepared, and that preparedness needed to have been done before tryouts actually began. So this year, the season started off, there was, like my senior, Merritt Anderson, had stated, there was just something special in the air. And there, something was. I shared something with them about history. And to a good friend of mine, Coach Gilligan at D.H. Conley, every year that they have done well, and the state playoffs, Rose has seemed to follow up and do one better. So I proposed a question to the players, what would happen this year if we were able to repeat history? And that was to make it back into Raleigh, which they did. But what's amazing about this group of young ladies and all the teams that I've been able to coach at Rose, they're just not talented on the volleyball court. They excel in the classroom as well. We're being recognized here tonight for their accomplishment, you know, for bringing home a state title back to J.H. Rose, which has been a thrill for the faculty, staff, the student body, the pep rally, and all the recognition. But I'd like to share something on the student side. I try to remind them that athletics will open a door for them to many opportunities, but it's their academics that's going to take them to where they finally want to end. So for this year's team, for the fall semester, their overall weighted GPA, and we have 15 players, is a 4.18. Their overall unweighted GPA is 3.52. The total courses that they are taking of AP courses, there are 38 AP courses being taken, as well as 65 honors courses taken. Now, one thing about playing athletics and sports, these young ladies have got to realize time management. They have to practice after school for two hours, usually from 5:30 to 7:30. Then they have to go home, eat, study, and then excel in the classroom. During the week, we practice Monday through Friday, or Monday, Monday through Friday in some of those game days, and then we're on activity bus. So for these young ladies to accomplish and keep their grades up is where we probably should be recognizing them, for me as a coach. That makes me extremely happy that they were able to keep up their grade point average, and certainly for their parents. But to be recognized here by the board for their accomplishment they did on the court, that is special as well. If it's all right, I would like to call up the girls and introduce you right quickly to you, so you'll know who everyone is. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I don't want to hold many people up. First of all...
Norman, let me give you...
Okay.
That's a map? Okay. We want to recognize you also. Pitt County Board of Education proudly recognizes Norm Cabacar. You've created excellence in the East, and we appreciate all of the hard work that you did. These girls will always remember this opportunity that they have, and I'm sure they're going to always remember you as their coach, because behind a good team is always a good coach too, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
First, I'd like to introduce you to my assistant varsity coach. She is the head JV coach, Ms. Amanda Davis. I'd like to call down Ms. Maggie Reese. Ms. Alexis Askew was unable to make tonight, but we'll make sure we get that to her. Like to bring down Ms. Liza Thorell. Like to bring down Ms. Caroline Coon. Like to bring down Ms. Caroline Dougherty. Like to bring down Ms. Maggie Hallis. She was also chosen as the MVP for the finals. Unfortunately, Ms. Anna Aldridge could not make it tonight. I'd like to also share that she won the sportsmanship award from the North Carolina High School Association. Like to bring down Ms. Liz Gay. Like to bring down Ms. Jessica McClellan. Like to bring down Ms. Rachel Wilson. Unfortunately, Ms. Taylor Britt could not be here tonight, so we'll make sure she gets hers tomorrow. Like to bring down Ms. Shelby Casey. Unfortunately, Ms. Emily Wordsworth could not make it tonight. We'll make sure she gets hers tomorrow as well. Like to bring down Ms. Hope Gibson. And I'd like to bring down Ms. Merritt Anderson. Again, these young ladies, they did a great job this season. In any athletic event, you know, there's got to be some luck, stay away from injuries. There was one thing that I did find, and I shared with the girls, and this applies just not on the court, but it will also apply to them later in life, whatever career choices they make. And it was a little saying, I'll show it to you like this, but what its words are, "The best team isn't a team with the best players," although we might consider it as one of the teams with the best players. But, again, the best team isn't a team with the best players, but the team that plays best together.
There you go.
And certainly, this group of young ladies this year all realized their strengths and weaknesses, and they came together as one, and we were able to bring home another state championship to J.H. Rose High School.
Good job. They're going to know the next year. How many seniors you got? Three?
Seven.
Seven seniors?
Yeah.
Tough break.
Two sophomores.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you for inviting us. This is something they'll always remember.
Get out there and beat up the knees and the elbows and the bruises and the heads. That floor is hard. And I'm hard.
You had order, Walter.
Have a motion regarding the approval of consent items.
Chairman, I move we approve the consent items.
Second.
Second. We got a motion. Mark made the motion. Ms. Mildred seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. So consent items approved. Comments by the superintendent?
Welcome to new board members, and welcome back a couple other board members who joined the last year and a half. I've been here and look forward to the next couple of years. Also, we'd like to state that this week, the State Board of Education meets Wednesday and Thursday this week, and on their list is, and we've been recommended for approval, the Pitt County Early College High School. So we should have official notice of that this week, but so far, we're on the list to be approved, so we're very excited. I would like to thank the freaking team, Cheryl and Bill, Pitt Community College, and, you know, Dr. Massey and Dr. Gould, for all the work that they did to make that come together. So it's just been a great team effort, and very excited about the opportunities for kids here in Pitt County.
I would like to say I look forward to working with each one of you again for another year. And I think we've had a good year in the past, and we've had a lot of good things that we have begun in regards to Pitt County and educational programs and budget, and I think everything is working well. I look forward to working with Dr. Linker again. I think we've had a great working relationship, and that's due in part of us being able to accomplish some great tasks. I look forward to implementing that early college, also showing off our schools so that kids will begin and parents will see that Pitt County Schools is the best place for them, and that there's no other place for them, not a homeschool, not a private school, but Pitt County Schools. I'm hoping that we'll be able to see a difference in that, and that by the end of this year in December, that we will see that there's been an uptick in students that have returned to Pitt County Schools. But we've got to do our part to get them here.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Just a second.
Hold on. It's not early college.
Okay, just a second. You'll get a point, you'll get a chance to say it. But again, I would like for us to also remember, continue to remember Michaela Little at Rose High and that family. We just can't imagine what they're going through unless it happens to us. You know, we say we do, but we don't know until it happens to us. So let's continue to remember them and throw the support out. The bullying topic, we've had a number of parents that speak to that, and I'm sure the school board, as well as the superintendent, will look into that, and we'll do all we can to improve our schools to prevent bullying from happening and at the level that some of the parents think that it's happening and say that it's happening. We'll begin with Billy.
I'd like to appreciate the board. The past few months, I've been in the school, I've been going two nights a week, and had to go to auctions two nights a week, and I have finally graduated this past month, past week. So I like to appreciate the time and consideration that they put up with me while I was in auction school.
Good. Mary?
I'd like to say congratulations to all our new board members and everything. Congratulations to Worth, congratulations to... Thanks for nominating me, Ms. Mildred. That kind of surprised me, so thank you for that. I'd like to say two things. Excellent convention in Greensboro, School Board Association, learned so much, brought back lots of information that will help our students in the district, and I cannot wait to share. Hopefully, we can get a retreat done so that we can get information shared amongst our board, new board members, to get things like that rolling. What else? My heart goes out to the Little family. They lost not only their, we lost our student, but their child lost her father and a brother. So there's three-in-one family, so we, you know, we just got to keep them lifted up in prayer and our community as a whole. It's been, I know in our community, it's just been one funeral after another, holiday after, you know, right even, right at the holidays, it's been one thing after another. We just got to continue to support our youth. The bullying thing, we just don't know. It's another whole ballgame, you know, from when we were coming up. I'm watching it, Mr. Chairman. It's another whole, it's another whole stratosphere from when we were coming up. So we just got to figure out how to work it. You know, we get better education about it as a board, we get better education about it as administrators, so we can help these parents to help the students.
Thank you. Walter, you've got three minutes.
It's my turn.
Yeah, three minutes. There it is. Two minutes. I'm sorry, two minutes. You've got two minutes.
Anyway, I want to thank you, I'm glad to be back up here. I want to commend the J.H. Rose High School girls, because I know what it is, to get out there and beat your knees and elbows up and bruise up and hop around. They did an excellent job to make it all the way to the state. In the early college thing, I have been able to work with two early colleges and the students. They are excellent, excellent programs, and it's really, they are, the kids just love it, because I ask them, I'm right up front, "Why do you come here?" Because it's strictly all academics, and they really, they're into it, and it's like their own thing that they do. It's really a fantastic program. I just wish Pitt County had got in on it earlier. We missed the boat somewhere, but we want to get in on it and get that early college going as quick as possible. It's great for all the kids, I'll tell you that. They apply because they want to do something. Mark has excellent in Edgecombe County, he knows all about it, so he can tell you some things about it. So it's up there. And again, I want to tell you thank you, and for the people that supported me, and I'm going to do the very best job I can. I got a lot of mouth, I know, but it's life.
It is life.
You agree on saying?
Yeah, I do agree. You have been truthful there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, congratulations on becoming our chairman again this year. You've done a tremendous job in leading us this past year, and we look forward to your continued leadership this year. I also would like to thank the Board of Education for the confidence that you bestowed upon me as vice chairman, and I look forward to working with you and maybe those that didn't see fit to vote for me tonight. I also look forward to earning your trust and confidence as we move forward this upcoming year. As far as bullying is concerned and the comments that were made, you know, I was thinking, we are a great society to be able to come in to a public institution, a board of education, and be able to express concerns like we have. And the public just needs to know and understand that we are very, very sensitive to that, and we're very sensitive to their needs and their wants and their concerns and their issues that they have, because they are, some of them, life and death. And that we, as a board of education, Mr. Chairman, under your leadership, we've been committed to making sure that our policies are adjusted so that we take even more control of bullying, and I know with our superintendent and leadership team that we will continue to look at that and adjust that as it needs to be. And then finally, I do want to congratulate again the Rose High School volleyball team...
First of all, congratulations on becoming our chairman again this year.
Thank you.
You've done a tremendous job in leading us this past year, and we look forward to your continued leadership this year. I also would like to thank the Board of Education for the confidence that you bestowed upon me as, as vice chairman, and I look forward to working with you and maybe those that didn't see fit to vote for me tonight. I also look forward to earning your trust and confidence as we move forward this upcoming year. As far as bullying is concerned in the comments that were made, you know, I was thinking, we are a great society to be able to come in to a public institution, a board of education, and be able to express concerns like we have. And the public just needs to know and understand that we are very, very sensitive to that, and we're very sensitive to their needs and their wants and their concerns and their issues that they have because they are, some of them, life and death. And that we as a board of education, Mr. Chairman, under your leadership, we've, we've been committed to making sure that our policies are adjusted so that we take even more control of bullying, and I know with our superintendent and the leadership team that we will continue to look at that and adjust that as it needs to be. And then finally, I do want to congratulate again the Rose High School volleyball team. It's a tremendous compliment to be able to be called first in the state on anything, and volleyball is one of those things that we're first in the state on, and that's wonderful. I understand that they had seven seniors, Mr. Chairman, so they've got their chores ahead of them to match that again next year, but with the right combination, perhaps they can do it again. But congratulations and thank you.
Caroline?
Thank you so much. First, I'd like to thank the voters in districts four and five for electing me and to my friends and my family for supporting me throughout the campaign. Thank you. Considered a great honor to serve on the Pitt County Board of Education and to serve the students of, of this county. I look forward to working with my fellow board members, with the administration, and the many parents, businesses, and community leaders who care deeply about the success of our schools. I'd also like to congratulate the A.G. Cox First Raiders Robotics Team on their success at the first Lego League tournament held earlier, well, in November at South Central High School. Despite this being their rookie year, they qualified for the state competition, which will be held later this year. A huge thank you to Jenny Bland, their teacher and coach, for stepping up to do the incredible amount of work that it takes to start a robotics team in middle school and to obviously do a great job at it, and best of luck to them at state. And lastly, I want to extend my deepest condolences to the mother of J.H. Rose freshman, Michaela Little, and to her extended family. We are deeply saddened by her untimely death. Please know that our thoughts and our prayers are with you as you mourn the tragic loss of your precious family members. Thank you.
More?
First of all, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and this will be our last meeting before Christmas break, and wish everyone a safe and happy holiday. Hope you enjoy your time with your families, and I do hope that the educators do take some time to get some much deserved breaks with their families. As I often tell my staff before we break at a staff meeting or anything else, I do want to say thank you to all of the employees of Pitt County Schools that make this a great school system, from the bus drivers to the principals down to the superintendent, and the awesome job that each of you do on a daily basis. One of the takeaways from tonight's meeting, I heard someone say that people sitting in their offices or so on and so forth, we have several outstanding principals that are here tonight, and I'm sure other principals that are maybe even working in their buildings tonight, or certainly working at home or answering emails or so on and so forth. The job is never done, and it's all, all-consuming all the time. And so I want to say thank you for the awesome jobs that you do and for making great things happen on a daily basis. Oftentimes, it's easy to get beaten up by things that happen, but continue to put forth the right foot and continue to do the awesome jobs that you do, and thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do every day.
Ms. Mildred?
Okay, I'd like to say it's great to be back, and I've already thanked the supporters and all of that, and also I would just like to say congratulations to both of you, Worth and Benji, and I do trust you, but I also, I've been to two other swearing-in today, and it sort of concerns me that we don't have anybody challenging anything, so I did it. One reason to challenge, to just put some other names out there because we do have other people that are very competent to serve, and so, and it has nothing against anybody personally, but I just think I like competition. And also, I want my board chair and co-chair to go to some meetings because I feel left helpless in a sense when I go to these state meetings and my board leaders are not there. It's very embarrassing, and so I'd just like to challenge you this year, go to at least one because we always talk about how great Pitt County is, but Pitt County don't go outside of Pitt County, and Pitt County need to learn some new things. And I know that we think we are smart here, but we always can learn some things. So I'd just like to challenge us this year because I, I don't like having leaders that don't seem to think they need to learn nothing because you do, you absolutely do, and I respect both of you highly and I wish you the best, and you can count on me to work with you, but also we continue to challenge all of us to be a little bit more involved because it is so embarrassing going to a statewide meeting and two or three people from a level member board is represented only, and that is terrible, I'm sorry. And we do not know it all. You think you're smart, but if you go to something, learn some more things, you'll be even brighter. Thank you on that. And the other thing is, I'd just like to say that creating global children has been my mission. Tonight, you got a chance to see one of a star alumnus of Pitt County School System, my son. Logan is serving in Brussels, Belgium with the State Department, and he's representing the whole United States of America there. So we do have great schools here, and we know our schools have done some great jobs, but guess what? We can even do much better than that. And so I would like to see more of our young people serving the world and really getting more engaged, and I'd just like to congratulate those young people that were here tonight in athletics. And also, my heart goes out to the Little family, and we need to do more to even support our families that are in need. We need to work on the bullying, as I've been saying ever since I've been on the board, and tonight I think it's very clear to have people that have lost their children or their loved ones and family members. So it's a lot of work, so we got much more to do, but if we go to some of these meetings at the state and the national level, we will be, have even more expertise. We can't just sit here at home and think we know it all. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that lecture, Mother.
Yes. I'm serious.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we go into closed session to consult with our attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege and also to consider and give instructions concerning a judicial action titled Billy Walls versus Pitt County Board of Education. I'll cite the statutes if you'd like. NCGS 143-318, 11A3.
Okay, motion's been made. It was second.
Second.
Caroline's second. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Going into closed session.